And zoning? We have a roll call, please. Amanda here.
Eric here.
Lynn here.
Michael here.
Jeff here.
Do I need to start that over? So, say, no.
No.
And Daryl is on Zoom, but we cannot hear him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has everybody checked tonight's agenda? May I have an approval? A motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
You have a second. I second. Motion by Jeff, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from, uh, November or... What was it? Twenty-third or twenty-seventh? Thank you. Does anybody have anything they'd like to correct or change or anything? Edit, anything?
No.
No, 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 no? May I have a motion to approve, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-seventh.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a note for the minutes that Daryl has left the meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, never mind. He's back. Eric left again. I don't know. He might be having internet problems.
Well, once he gets in, why don't we all say hi CO he's doing and make sure he's connected?
Yeah.
Declaration of conflicts of interest. Anyone?
I have a conflict of interest because I will be presenting for the Midtown Village PUD and I'll be recusing.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Public comment. There is no one in the audience?
Do I have to put that back on record?
You already disclosed it.
He disclosed it. You can do it again. It's no big deal.
No, I don't need to.
Okay.
Uh, there is no one online.
And there is no one online, so we will close public comment. Special presentations. There are none. I mean, Santa Claus isn't coming?
Santa Claus is not coming. At least not tonight.
I suppose he gets too expensive. Okay. There are no special presentations. Design review and land use public hearings, Midtown Bit... Midtown Village PUD. We're going to start with preliminary.
I will review.
And then we will go to preliminary plan. And then we will go to zoning. District map. Planning unit development review amendment of character area.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think I've spoken with the applicant. I think Richard is online and ready to help us through this one. And then you and I spoke earlier about today. We think that Jeff is... Jeff is walking us through some of the materials that he provided in anticipation or as a request from the commission for this meeting. I think it would probably work best if he presents the first piece of information or material and then you have a chance to ask questions, discuss that, and we'll go down the line. And then we also have some questions that came from Commissioner Boyd that we've provided answers for as staff. And I think we'll address those after we get through the updated materials. Does that sound reasonable?
So, we're going... Yes. And let's do one at a time. Like open space, landscape, whatever. Okay.
Madison, do you have anything to introduce at all? Or can you go over?
Not necessarily to go over. That would be of, you know, necessarily a shock to y'all, but just for the record's sake. This was continued from the November thirteenth hearing with direction to the applicant to provide additional exhibits for landscaping, snow storage, parking, as well as taking a look at AMI and the open space. And so, a majority of those have been addressed or provided. And so, that is... It does not have to be the limit of what y'all talk about tonight, but that is certainly, you know, the bulk of the reason why the hearing was continued. And as a reminder, the public comment portion of the hearing was opened and not closed at the last meeting. Or the last two meetings go with the last meeting for Midtown. So, should any decision be made tonight, public comment is still open and will then need to be closed should obviously nobody comment.
And we do have one letter in the file that was received. So, that should be read into the record during public comment or something like that.
Do you want to do that? Or do you do that?
You do, or...
Okay. Okay.
All right.
So, we're next to the presenter. Who is Jeff Armstead?
Jeff Armstead, sixteen thirty-two Main Street. Thank you, guys. Like Scott and Madison said, I think we'll just like to go through each of the items that you requested additional information on. And we'll take them one at a time. So, Madison, if you would, maybe pull up whatever you have first on your list there. Doesn't really matter. I don't think which... I think we... I think landscape might be first or...
All right. There we go. This one or the colored one?
Well, let's look at that one first. And maybe let's focus first on the code little table that's up above there. So, I had our civil engineer, their landscape architect, their licensed landscape architect, take another look at this and give us some better detail. And then, so what they did was divide up and show each tract, A, B, C, D, and E, the square footage of each tract. And then the number of trees according to the code that would be required for each tract. And then how many we are providing on each tract. And so, it's not a direct one-to-one because of the uses of each tract. Like where if track A is twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet, it would say that it needs twenty-two trees on track A. And we're only showing that we're providing seven. What we're doing is we're moving some more trees into some other tracks that have more open space for them. And we're showing more also up in the right-of-way at the entrance to make it the appearance along Main Street. You know, beautify that a lot more. So, um, at the bottom here, we're showing that the required number of trees would be roughly sixty-eight. And we're showing that we're providing seventy-nine. And then if we zoom out, there's a plant schedule on here that shows the different types of trees and the numbers of them. So, there's, um, I think, what? Twenty-eight junipers, eight firs, seven spruce. And then there's a bunch of deciduous trees. These are all the different numbers of deciduous trees. And then there's some shrubs for ziriscape. And then there's some alternates that are shown. And what I put into the letter also is that the code is pretty... I guess you look at it two ways. It's... It only says one tree per thousand square feet. It doesn't reference shrubs. So, there is no... There's no way to say I'd like to give one shrub for a tree or five shrubs for a tree in lieu. There's just no provision in the code for that. So, we're just strictly showing trees in them. We're also showing a bunch of shrubs, too, that are not required by the code, but we are showing them on the plan. So, if we could zoom out, you can see visually where each of these trees are being shown. And these numbers here correspond, like eleven of the JC. Each one of these different types of trees are shown in the numbers of trees and arrows pointing to where they go. I think that the easier way to visualize it is in the other plan that shows kind of more of a three-dimensional view of the trees and where they go and which different types they are. So, obviously, here around the micro homes, we're showing a pretty good... Kind of what would grow into a break. You know, there are no trees here currently. The road here on the neighbor's lot is what goes up to the water tank, water tank number two up on the Medina property. But there are no trees lining this. So, this would provide a lot of privacy between the future possible fire station, commercial building, and these micro homes. And then it would give a little bit of privacy in between them. And then in the open spaces, the common areas, there's more trees in here. And then, like we said before, you know, with the size of the apartment building and the proximity to the Martin Creek open space and the amount of trees that are in the rear on the U.S. Forest Service land on both sides here and with the entryway, there's not a lot of opportunity to plant too much here that would grow very tall. So, we would... We're showing, you know, that a lot of this stuff, a lot of these trees are moreover in tracks C, D, and E, and not as many on tracks A and B. So, I guess with that, I would just take some questions because, like I said, we are showing more trees than what the code is recommending that we have on this iteration of the plan.
Um, I'll go first since, you know, I'm the one who loves this. One thing I think we still need are the sizes on the firs that you'll put in. I think they have to be four feet from the top of the ball, minimum.
Yeah. I think that's... It's shown in there, too. And it also shows the caliper size, I believe.
The caliper it does. The sizes on the pines it does not. At least not on what I have in front of me.
Yeah. And there was some talk... Scott and I had some talk about whether or not certain fir trees might be better to be shown as deciduous trees. I think... I think that's something that... There was some... There was just some talk about, you know, we all know how large spruce trees grow and some other fir trees grow. And if you plant them too close to a house, someday they're going to get... They're going to overcrowd the house, right?
Well, also where those are, right along your pathway, are they not?
They are.
And they're going to get into that a bit, too. Because, I mean, they can get an eight-foot span easy.
Yeah. And like I was kind of saying last time, I think that there are some fir trees and some junipers that are almost kind of considered more like a dwarf and they don't grow as tall.
Pinions.
Yeah.
And roses. On some of your pines, you can buy shorter ones and narrower ones. And that's going to depend on the landscaper you're working with to help you pick those out.
Right.
And I think also I worry a little bit about some of the deciduous you have because you have like three or four kinds of maple and I don't know how well they'll do up here. So, talk to somebody local on that, not from back in the Midwest. I mean, there are some. I have a client on Mill Creek Circle that has a gorgeous maple in her front area. I have a Ganella maple in my yard, which is shorter. And it has lasted ten, fifteen years already. And it's a red one. And it can be shaped and pruned and all that. But I'm not sure all of these are going to work.
Right. And I think, you know, when the... Fast forward to when we would be implementing any of these plans, you know, there would obviously be another round of review when it comes to building permits. You know, there would be with town engineers and, you know, submitting actual plans for specific tracks as they... You know, as more water becomes available. And I've worked for and known Mark Chart, who rents space in our town, you know, Chart's Yards. He's been my landscaper for over almost twenty years. And he would certainly be the one that I would rely on for something like this. So, he's got a lot of experience here in the valley with what works and what doesn't work, as well as the tree farm out in Walcott. Quite a lot of trees for them, too. So...
The other thing is on some of your bushes, make... They even say the word berries in them. And in your PUD guide, you say no fruit, no berries. So, there are other bushes. You don't even have potatia in here, which is a native, which comes in multiple colors. It's an easy bush to maintain.
Sure.
And it has no fruit or berries. You know, there's sage bushes that can do the same thing.
Sure.
So, just to remind you, that is in your PUD guide that you can't have that. So, have that checked, too.
Sure.
Mugo pines. There's a dwarf Korean lilac, which would be nice to have in there, a little bit of flowering. And it's drought resistant. Those are just ones that are drought resistant.
Yeah.
Potatia is double drought resistant. So, I mean, you see that out in the park.
Sure.
They get kind of weedy out there. But with a little bit of love, they do.
Sure. Well, I think, you know, the overall intent of this was, you know, first and foremost, to show visually, you know, depict that we can provide the amount of trees that are required. We're certainly not, you know, married to any specific type of tree over another at this point. I think this is really more of an exercise in showing that the space can accommodate it more than, you know, I'm going to go out and dig a hole tomorrow and put these trees in the ground.
The other thing they show on here on your bushes, which is great, is they're container grown. That makes them a better chance of taking.
Yeah.
So, that was good. And I thank you for doing this. Scott, in something like this where we're taking something, bringing it up better compared to what is in that role, does that need a condition to get it changed into there? Or you just work it out?
Good question. It just becomes through Jeff submitting it, you requiring it or requesting it, Jeff submitting it, us reviewing it, and Jeff providing testimony, it becomes part of the record.
Okay. Thank you. I think that was about all I had. Does anybody else have anything? No? Yes. Anybody else on landscaping?
Daryl, do you have anything on landscaping? Can you talk?
All right. Unmuted. Can I... Do you hear me?
Yay! We can hear you now. This is awesome.
Hi, Daryl.
How are you feeling?
It's only a couple of weeks. So, we're here. No, but I do like the three-dimensional look on where those trees go. That gives a good idea, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Snow storage. So, um, I think the biggest takeaway from this was to depict the entry to the parking garage, the ramp as being snow melted because I think that was one of the big issues with the last plan was showing and some of the commissioners wondering how we were going to be able to get this snow in and out of here. So, this hatching probably should go a little further in front of the dumpster. But if you could just kind of visualize that the plow truck comes in and starts to backblade this way, then could turn in and push. And you can kind of see the directions of where all of this snow is going to go and where it's going to be stored. And then I also put a note in the letter that I wrote if we zoom out a little bit that future phases, specifically the townhomes, if they get built someday, very good chance that the driveways and this short access road would also be snow melted. The parking spots for the micro homes very likely would be snow melted. And who knows around a fire station? You know, I think most fire stations around here in the valley probably have snow melt on their concrete aprons that the trucks drive on. So, in essence, the main traffic areas might just be the only areas in the future that would need to be plowed and then stored. So, I think that the locations that are shown, obviously, the open space, where, you know, where you'd have play equipment, et cetera, like nobody maintains playgrounds in the winter here. So, there would be more snow storage potentially there. Obviously, until these phases, we have more water, there's plenty of room to put snow in the near future for many years, probably, until the town gets more water. And then as water becomes available and these different tracks, if they come to fruition, then obviously, there would be another layer of review that would come to whether or not these have snow, you know, snow storage and how that works out. I know town of Avon and a lot of the municipalities now are moving to a much higher... A much higher, let's say, scrutiny of energy offset. So, the cost of a snow melt system and hot tubs and fire pits and things like that are all... You're going to pay a lot more money now moving forward, I think. So, the way that I understand it is the energy offset with solar is going to the county and some of the municipalities are going to start giving a bigger credit for solar offset if you had a snow melt system or a hot tub or a fire... Gas fire pit. But they're really trying to, I think, I don't know, deter or just find a way to offset the gas use.
I have one question we didn't talk about last time. Where will the mechanical room for that snow melt system be?
The snow melt system for this?
Yes.
It would be down in this garage.
Okay. Because I did count some places in that garage. And is it one of those there or is it still undecided?
It would be... There's a ton of space over here showing the storage.
Okay.
So, it would most likely be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it'll be in the apartment building?
It'll be in that. Yeah. It'll be part of that building. There's potential, you know, for more boilers could go in these, in this commercial building and underneath this commercial building. I've seen other... I know like up in Buffer Creek, the big apartment complex up there, they have... They actually have like little sheds around the property that have boilers in them that...
I just wanted to make sure we wouldn't lose any parking for them.
No. No.
So, Jeff, do you foresee additional areas being snow melted in the future?
I do.
Okay.
But I think... I think that, like I said, the driveways for these townhomes and this access road, this fire access road, the breakaway gate here, I think that those potentially could be... I think that the parking spaces for the micro homes potentially could be. And I think that the aprons for the fire station or commercial building could be. They're not drawn that way right now, but I think that they could be.
I don't know if you've ever looked into geothermal or how many zeros that adds to your project, but...
It is a few.
It's being done. I know the county's moving forward with some geothermal for their complex down in Eagle.
Yeah. I think Daryl asked about that last time, too. I did look at a map after our meeting last week and we are certainly in a zone that looks nice on the map, like as a possibility. I don't know how deep you have to go and...
It's pretty close to the water table. So, I think that's where it generates heat exchange.
I think there's a lot of potential for it. But generally, you know, I just wanted to show because I think last time there was some request to just say, how are you going to maintain that ramp? So, we show that. And then, you know, like I said, I think we're... I think we're showing that we have ample storage for Phase One at this point. And Phase... You know, future phases, I think we're just going to have to scrutinize those as they come in.
The other thing we talked about last time was the responsibility of the sidewalk along the highway. And through doing my homework a little bit on page seventy of the PUD guide, snow removal management of all common areas, driveways and sidewalks, including the sidewalk located in the Colorado Department of Transportation, C-Dot, right-of-way shall be performed under the direction of Midtown Village Master Owners Association.
Right.
And while we are there, Madison, I have one edit on that paragraph on page seventy. It says, "May me snow melt in." I think it should say, "May be snow melt in."
Yeah. All of the snow melting, all of the snow removal, all of the maintenance regarding snow and the roads and the sidewalks are going to be the HOA.
Other than that, I have nothing else. Does anybody else? On the snow melt? No. No? 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 Next?
Daryl. Daryl have anything?
Nope. No, I have nothing.
All right. Thanks, Daryl.
Next would be either open space or parking, I guess. Whoever's next on the list or on your screen there. Open space. So, um, there was... We had a conversation at the last meeting about whether or not the open space and the code requires the twenty-five percent dedication or recommends the dedication. I'm not here to debate that. But in light of that, I will say that for a long time, we and the staff and conversations and meetings that we've had over the last couple of years, we've always kind of felt like, and the general conversation and tone was that the amount of deed-restricted housing that we were going to provide, which was way over the... What's required was sort of a trade-off for not only the density, but also what open space was left. And so, when we first submitted our plans and we started doing our calculations, we kind of took some really conservative swipes at what's open space. And we ended up around twenty-three percent. And I think that's what was in the packet the first time you guys read it. In light of the fact that there has been kind of some pushback on it, I had my engineers go back and really do a detailed inch-by-inch, square foot-by-square-foot look at what is the passive open space and what is the active open space and what's not allowed to be calculated in the open space. Particularly with the two, you know, the two cottages, you can see that those two lots are basically... That's their own land that they could theoretically own. Whereas all of the land around the micro homes, blue and green, is considered common area, open space. So, if someone bought one of these homes someday, they're not tiny homes, but they're small. But we've always been proposing that you could buy the house, but you don't own the land around your house. And the reason for that is because every square foot of land and wintering costs a lot of money. So, to save, to keep the price of the house down, we make all the land around it open, just like an apartment building or a condo. Same with the townhomes. All the land around the townhomes is common area, public area. You can walk around it. You can walk around all these houses. You can walk around the fire station. You can walk around the apartment building. You can walk behind this commercial building. And then you can use all of the right-of-ways and sidewalks, et cetera. Those are all open space, common area. So the green, what I, what I asked the engineers to do was to detail it in a little better way where you guys could visualize it. And what's shown in green and what's shown in blue adds up to actually twenty-eight percent of open space. And so when we got down to brass tacks, we, we found that we had more open space dedicated than we thought we did. So I think, you know, because of whether or not it's a requirement or a recommendation, I think we just wanted to demonstrate that we are providing um and meeting the, meeting the, the letter of the code as it's written, either way, e- either way you interpret it.
I'll hold mine. Does anybody have anything on this? Amanda?
No, not for me.
Michael?
No.
So mine is fairly simple, too.
Okay.
And as I said, I had that down, what you was recommended, what you had. Last time, what you were asking, we're talking about. However, if you go into the PUD guide, and I forget which page, I can look it up for you. It talks about the open space in phase one being nine thousand three hundred and approximately in phase two and three being ten thousand, which only adds up to nineteen thousand. So considering your newer figures, which you gave us today, I think you need to look at that and perhaps somehow bring it up to date to match what you're talking about.
I assume that there's gonna be some changes in the language of the PUD guide based on, on what comes out of these meetings.
Oh, it's on page fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, thank you.
So at least it matches what
Sure.
else is being talked about on the architectural.
Well, and I think phase, I don't know even, I'm not even familiar enough with that to know whether or not phase, phase one and phase two, like I don't think that's a hundred percent of the buildout either.
No, it says phase one or phase two plus three is how it says, and three. Remaining future development parcels in phase two and three also include an additional ten thousand square feet of plaza, zero escaping passive open space and rustic connector trail.
Right. So I think, I think this is showing what thirty thousand five hundred and forty-four? So we're off by, and that's, the numbers that you're reading are still from the old.
Right, that's what I'm saying, just make sure before it goes to a fine, fine plaque that that's matches somehow.
Totally.
Got that done. Okay, what's next?
Probably parking. Okay, um, I asked the engineers to color code this, obviously, um, just so that you guys can kind of see quickly and visually where the parking, the number of parking spaces provided and which different tract they are dedicated to. They would, they would very likely be either designated through painting on the si- you know, on the um, on the actual spaces or with some kind of signage. But they're definitely going to be um enforced by the HOA or, or the um, you know, the residents and, and the res- whoever the resident manager is or the property manager, obviously. But the HOA would be in charge of policing and enforcing who's parking where and who's taking advantage of something. So the amount of parking spaces for the apartments that are required is for phase one is thirty-five and I believe we're showing thirty
One?
Thirty-five right there, so thirty-one inside, four spaces outside.
And I saw that you added the handicap, thank you.
Correct. And then the commercial building, um, it's, it's a little interesting how you, how you think about the commercial building because A, it's been a long-term lease with Steam Master for many years and it will continue to be a long-term lease with Steam Master. And when I say that, I, nobody goes to work there. Nobody works at this building every day, inside the building. It's a warehouse, so their trucks, it stores all their equipment, their trucks pull in, they park, they unload equipment, they load equipment, they might clean some equipment and then they leave. But nobody goes to work here. So the number of parking spaces required by the code um for the apartments is far exceeds what's being, you know, eighteen. Now, keep in mind, that does include the three apartments of, that where people are living now. But for the most part, they're not gonna use all these spaces. But if, obviously, in the future, the, the lease expired, the use changed, somebody came in and wanted to open a, a different kind of a business in there, we need to provide the amount of parking that, that it requires. So all these spaces are just shown, um, to, you know, depicting that we, we have enough parking per the code. When it comes to the townhomes on tract, on this tract, we, we have twice as much than we need. The reason for that is because each townhome would have two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway if they had to. So there's forty parking spaces here, whereas I believe if we scroll down, the, the townhomes only require twenty-two. But nobody from the apartments can go park there, nobody from the commercial building can go park there. So showing that we have forty spaces there is, even though it exceeds the code, it doesn't help any of the other tracts at full buildout. The micro homes, um, all of these parking spaces are in pretty, you know, obviously pretty close proximity. So if that's the furthest someone had to walk to get in here, you're still not talking about, you know, less than a football field, so. And then, so, so the amount of parking space required um for the townhomes is uh, or for the micro homes is sixteen and, and we're showing sixteen spaces. And then last is the fire station, future commercial building. And because we don't, you know, we don't know exactly what that use is gonna be, that's probably the last phase of this development. And per the square footage of the building, it would require, I think, what we say down here, tens, ten spaces and we're showing ten spaces. So um, phase one requires fifty-seven spaces. We're providing sixty-four, so seven more spaces than the code requires and we're providing a hundred and twenty-seven spaces at full buildout.
I got a question real quick, the cottages, are you using the six and the two from in the green? Or where's those eight parking spaces?
The eight parking spaces are similar to the townhomes, you'd have two cars in each garage, two cars in each driveway.
Okay, so they have.
They have garages. Correct. They're deep enough and wide enough to put two cars in, two cars in, two cars, two cars.
And, and remind me, um, or can we all ask questions?
No, go right ahead.
And remind me with, cuz you guys said you had to build out all of the infrastructure. When you build out all of the infrastructure, will all hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces be built out at that time? Or are you just building out phase one and phase two?
Yeah, if we go back to the snow storage, if, if the snow storage plan is probably the best one to just quickly reference what phase one will look like. So you're gonna have all these spaces?
Okay.
You're gonna have all of these spaces and these spaces. You're not gonna have these for the micro homes and you're not gonna have the townhomes and you're not gonna have the building here, but you have all the parking for that future building.
Got it. Okay, so the only one that is minus is, is, is the?
Micro homes.
Micro homes.
And townhomes.
And townhomes, okay, thank you.
Really, as far as the public would kind of view it, if you, if you had those eight spaces for the micro homes, they would look similar because it would be curb and gutter, whereas this, this is proposed when you drive into these two townhomes someday, these two buildings, you know, it's, it's gonna look like private driveways, so wouldn't really worry about somebody using a spot for an apartment or something, but you, these are all gonna feel more like a commercial parking area.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on parking?
I have one for Madison, because I've never asked this. So all of these things have numbers that have been changed. Do we confirm those numbers? Or is it just what Jeff gets us from his firm?
When you say, do we confirm, do you as a planning commission confirm?
No, do you, does Steph?
I see, yes, yes, we have.
I would not expect us to do that.
Right, which is.
I just want to know how it gets.
What, double checked?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, obviously, the only one really up in the air is the potential fire station, which could also be other things, so it's hard to nail down a potential number of spaces for that one, but all of the others, pretty much, but.
Gabby, to Madison's point, if, if the, if that commercial building someday was proposed to be a restaurant, it would have a whole different set of requirements for parking.
It'll have to be bike in, bike out.
Right. So, you know, we're, we're making our best guess as to providing enough parking spaces for sort of a, a general intended use.
But in all of these, I mean, open space, snow storage, all of those get double checked by us, that's what I was going for. Okay. I have two small edits and then I'm done and then everybody else can ask other questions if they would like. One is on page sixty of the PUD. And this may just be my own idea for clarification.
On the PUD guide?
Yeah. It says, the applicant will agree to and sign a resident occupied deed restriction acceptable to the town minter for the sixteen parentheses nineteen apartment units. Now, we all know what that means, I mean sixteen plus nineteen. But could we maybe put nineteen and then in parentheses put sixteen plus three? So that it explains that, cuz the way you read it, it's a little, reminds me of that other thing we had with ten days and five days, something like that. And then the other one is on page sixty-three. B, tract B, three primary use. Your male level commercial warehouse should be probably main. And then I have one more question, I guess I fibbed. In here, we talk about, actually, I think I have the page for that also, let me find it. Page fifty-nine. Tracks D and E, which we're now working with tonight, but I wanted to clarify this cuz it talks about the apartments in phase one. Any designated resident occupied unit, if sold to a non-qualifying occupant, will require the collection of a two percent transfer fee payable to town minter to be used as a source for local warehouse, workforce housing. On other PUDs we have had, they have stated at which time that would come into play. In other words, if it were six months down the line and nobody was taking them, they might do it then. Do you have any idea what your timeline might be on that?
I would say that my intention right now would be.
None.
I think that in the past, if my recollection serves, valid in place was thirty days.
And that would be unlike the townhomes?
Townhomes are full market.
Full market anyhow, okay.
They were always intended to be.
So the tiny homes?
The tiny homes for sure.
Oh, yeah, here it is, above. The commercial building and eight micro homes, and it also talks about the sixteen apartments.
Correct.
Okay.
The sixteen apartments in phase one are all the, are all proposed to be deed restricted.
And what, clarify please, what it means by non-qualifying?
It just means that if you don't live and work in the valley and you're, for instance, a homeowner from Denver and you wanna have a second home.
Okay.
So it's, it's to discourage that. And it's also to, if, if for some reason the market, you know, if we try this, if we get to build the tiny home or the micro home someday and they don't sell and I have to sell to a second homeowner that doesn't live and work in the valley, then they're gonna have to pay the transfer tax. And I don't particularly intend on putting a timeframe on it. I think that I would like to keep the door open for locals first, as long as I can.
So that are all mine. So let's start with Amanda, do you have anything else?
For the?
For anything at this point, unless Jeff has something else he wants clarification on.
I have, I mean, I have a single question, but it's not related to so far what we've gone through.
Go for it.
Um, so it has to relate to the C dot, um, what C dot has signed off on for phase one and phase two. And this is more first staff guidance question. So they've approved, you know, C dot has approved um the access for those two phases. If, when phase three, four, four and five come to fruition and they, we go back to C, they go, like, Midtown goes back to C dot. And if that traffic, traffic study shows that there is a requirement for another egress or additional work, how does that change what we're looking at today? Like, from the plaid perspective and the PUD perspective, like from a admit, like, like what we're doing today, because C dot doesn't, hasn't looked at it from all of the egresses. They've only looked at it from a phase one, phase two, and the egress is fine. What happens if they go back and three, four, five and they say, nope, there needs to be another egress, best step based on volume? What happens?
Okay, um, Jeff Spinell is online, I'm gonna take a quick stab at what I think the right answer is and then he's gonna correct me.
Okay.
Generally, C dot is in the business of getting rid of access points along the highways and that's a reflection that you see in this plan where I think earlier iterations, we were looking at two access points and the direction from C dot was, we'd like one, right? And that has everything to do with traffic safety, the amount, the amount of curb cuts or driveways along this thoroughfare that they're trying to move traffic. So I, my sense is that will not happen. What might happen in the future with additional development, we know that they're gonna, the developer, HOA, whoever's proposing to do additional phases is gonna need to do an updated traffic study and go through C dot to get an updated access permit for that additional volume coming out of the development. This is where I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, I don't know if that's gonna turn into additional kind of off-site improvements, turn lanes, X cell, D cell lanes, things like that. Might be a reality in the future, but I don't, I don't think it changes your review of what you're being asked to review.
Okay.
Right? And if it were, let's just say that there's a different C dot in fifteen years and they say, you know what? This is how we used to do things, now we want a second access point or something like that. And it causes a amendment to the overall PUD plan, that might be a PUD amendment that has to come in.
Okay.
Can I say something before Jeff? Sorry, Jeff, but um, when we first uh went to C dot and to Scott's point, there i- there is an access here now. This is the way you drive in and out of the site now and there is an access here now, which was to the Quintana property and the Quintana mom's house. So these two accesses historically have existed for a long, long time. When we first propos- or submitted this plan to C dot a couple of years ago, it, it was this plan, the full buildout. So they've seen it, they approved it, they, they liked it. What they said was, we don't want this to be a U where people can come in and out, whatever. We want you to shut this off and we want you to get rid of that access, give it up permanently.
Okay.
Which we said, okay. And we want one access in and out.
Okay.
So when they looked at it and we, and then when my traffic engineer did the traffic study, it showed that it needed a D cell lane to come from town
Yep.
and come in to the, to the site. Obviously, the sidewalk is already there, right? When we did the first sidewalk project, Michelle and other people at the town were really excited about having a D cell lane right there and ripping all of that infrastructure out and redoing it. Also, when we did that, this was prior to the, when we first started talking to C dot, it was prior to the moratorium, the water moratorium. So when, fast forward to where we are now, where we don't have enough water to do these, this phase, this phase and this phase, it made sense to go back to C dot because obviously the traffic counts are gonna change quite a bit without, without all these people living here. So we went back to them and they looked at it again, my traffic engineer went back and looked at it, revised the traffic study, cuz they did a new traffic study based on the use of, of only phase one and that eliminated the need for the D cell lane, which town was happy about, C dot was happy about. So to Scott's point, if and when water becomes available and we're able to do future phases, then we do have to go back to C dot. And we do have to, you, you know, if it's, if we had enough water to do everything, we'd probably go back to them and just say, let's get the whole thing done and approved as it was. If we only have enough water to do something, then we'll have to have a new traffic study that's based on what we can build. But they have, they have seen it, both full buildout and phase what we have now.
That was my only.
You want to say, add anything to that, Mr. Spinell?
Um, the only thing I would say is that the uh C dot access permit is very specific for seven thousand five hundred square feet of warehouse space. for seven thousand five hundred square feet of warehouse space and twenty-one units. And the way the state access code is written, any change would be considered a change of use and would require a new access permit. So any future development, you know, if they change the use of the warehouse building to something else in the future, they're gonna have to go back to C dot and submit a new traffic study and get a new access permit.
Correct. Does that make sense, Amanda?
Yes, thank you. Eric?
Just wanted to thank you for addressing all these points that we had in the first meeting. I think everything pretty much got addressed. It's just the water moratorium. I'd like to see, you know, the affordable houses, the little tiny homes, but wait and see what happens with that.
I know. I would love to build them first.
Yeah, I just feel like that. I feel like everything's kind of like in that little spot where like the landscaping and everything is just like put where the tiny homes is, but.
It's, it's always been my dream to build those first. I mean, just that was. We need it.
I'd like to see it.
Michael?
I've asked all my hard questions. I got my answers. And when we're ready for a motion, you just let me help.
Let's see. I think Daryl's still on there as well. Daryl? Are you still there?
Yes, I sure am.
Do you have any questions?
No, but Jeff did answer a question that I had in my mind on why we did not have a U access to accesses going in and out. But seeing what he said about the C dot, I understand them saying, no, we only want one in and out. So thanks for filling that in.
Yeah, thanks, Daryl. I, I really didn't. I didn't feel like I could go toe-to-toe with C dot. As much, I, I always felt like that was creating a lot less congestion. It, it did make the town homes more private potentially in the future if, if and when they get built someday. You know, not having two-way traffic coming through there. It makes that a much more private part of the, of the site for the people that would buy those town homes. It would feel very kind of private down there, but.
Special.
And special, yeah. And so it, it does, it does create a little more traffic just on the main drag, having one way in and one way out, but yeah, like I said, I didn't, I didn't feel like I really had much ground to stand on with the C dot. They just said, yes, thank you.
Yep. Well, good. Thanks for clearing that up for me.
And if nobody else on commission has anything, I think we need to open to public comment. Oh, no, we have a public comment open still. So would somebody like to read our letter?
Yeah, but first, I think if it's okay, if it pleases the planning commission, I think Commissioner Boyd has some very specific questions. Those have been addressed by Richard and Jeff Spinell. I'd like to go through those because I think it's really important. Those were great questions. We've kind of touched on a couple of them. But that's why Richard, one of the reasons Richard's here tonight, so he can go through that. So Richard and Jeff, how would you like to work your way through these, some of these questions?
I can do it any way you want. I can read my letter. I can, you can pass my letter out however you want to handle it.
Okay. Well, the planning commissioners did receive your letter and Richard's letter, and Richard had some other attachments. I guess I could go through these one by one, or I just, I don't want to get too laborious here. So let's do this. Let's start with your engineering responses, Jeff. And this is from an email that we received on Sunday, the eighth from Michael. And so what if any issues from Jeff Spinell have been addressed or resolved since our last meeting? And the, the response is, engineering documents submitted with the application have been completed to a level to confirm constructability and demonstrate final plans can be prepared in accordance with the Minter Municipal Code. The comments included in our review letter are items that need to be included or addressed with the final plan submittal. The next question that you fielded, Jeff, was, does the traffic study apply just for this phase one and two? Is it a condition that the applicant must comply with whatever they require? And your answer, Jeff, was the current traffic study is specific to phases one and two tracks A and B. And I think we just discussed what happens in the future. There's gonna be additional traffic studies. There might be a new access permit required. Most likely, there's going to be. So hopefully that addresses the question, Michael.
Scott, it's not that it would likely, it would be required, period.
I, I like using non-committal terms, Jeff.
Especially when you're dealing with C dot.
I'm a planner.
That explains a lot.
Right. Next question that you fielded, Jeff, was, are we, and this is from Michael Boyd, are we requiring additional traffic studies and approval by C dot as part of any future development possibilities on phases three, four, and five? Your response was, C dot access permit number thirty-two forty ninety-four included with the submittal was issued based on the traffic study. The permit is specific and allows access for twenty-one residential units and seventy-five hundred square feet of warehouse space. C dot will consider any increase in storage space or the number of units, a change of use, and a new access permit will be required. The design of the driveway access and C dot notice to proceed, in parentheses, C dot approval of the design is required with the final submittal. So hopefully that's been addressed and resolved. Next question was, it seems like a blanket approval that C dot definitely has not approved because uses of three, four, and five have not and cannot be submitted without water, question mark. The answer is, the C dot access permit is specific and allows access for twenty-one residential units and seventy-five hundred square feet of warehouse space. C dot will consider any increase in storage space or the number of units, a change of use, and a new access permit will be required. Next question, should that be noted as condition, conditions that prior to any construction proposed, C dot studies are required and applicant must comply? If so, what would they be? The answer is, the design of the driveway access and C dot notice proceed is required with the final submittal. So we're gonna, we're gonna get all final details for whatever's being constructed under the access permit in order for the applicant and for us to approve it and for the applicant to get a notice to proceed from C dot. Does that make sense? Okay.
You're doing good.
I did okay?
Yep.
Sweet. So the next question was just C dot access question mark, and then the answer was, the applicant is currently in compliance with C dot access requirements. And I think those were all the engineering questions that were fielded. Okay. Richard, would you like to work your way through your memo in response to Michael's questions?
Sure, I'm happy to kind of go through these and summarize my responses, if that works.
Yes, please.
So his first question, what if any issues noted in my letter have been addressed? It did submit for the packet revised PUD guide and PUD narrative that tries to move around the kind of having the prosecution of the development and the application narrative in the PUD narrative, and then the PUD guide being a zoning document that makes sense when someone looks at it fifteen, twenty years from now. And so I, I think at the, at the end of this letter, I noted some additional edits that we'd like to make. You know, even, even though we've addressed some of those issues, we want to keep those conditions of approval in the motion in order to give staff in the town the discretion and protection we need to bring things to final form, a final plan and plat. I also answered kind of part of the question that Jeff had, had answered about it. Is it a condition of approval that applicant must comply with whatever they require? I interpreted that to be, how do you enforce conditions of approval? Basically, the, the town planner has a lot of discretion in determining whether these have been addressed sufficiently. A, a number of these conditions will be merged into the subdivision improvement agreement. So all the things around water, the, this discussion around the access permit, for example, that can all be put into the SIA, which then gets recorded on title. And so regardless of, you know, I know there's I think concern with any type of phase development that you get an approval and then you flip it to somebody else who's not Jeff Armistead, who then is not going to follow all the conditions that we all agreed on in the hearing room. By putting all these things into the SIA and recording them on, you know, as a covenant running with the land, then that is enforceable against any purchaser of the property in the future. If approved, is there one existing tap assigned to each phase not currently being developed, phases three, four, and five? The answer to that is no. Those did receive plus one. You know, it's existing historic SFE, single-family equivalence, which is defined in chapter thirteen of the code. Plus one is how the moratorium handles this. And so that is what midtown was granted and through kind of similarly with how we've handled other PUDs recently. Those are able to be consolidated among the larger development. And so that came out to twenty-two and a half SFEs, and that is the cap. That is the limit at this point. Mr. Armistead signed an acknowledgement that it is twenty-two point five SFEs that was included under the memo I provided. And that will also be included in the SIA. And on a plat note, there is, there is a plat note making this subject to the moratorium. Mike, Mike Sawyer, the town attorney, and I discussed this and we agreed that, you know, given, given the concerns over this, we will put twenty-two point five SFEs into both the SIA and the plat note. So there is no there's no question about what being subject to the water moratorium means.
Richard, can I stop you right there just for a quick
Yep.
check? Does everyone understand what an SIA is and what we're talking about plat notes? So on a, on a subdivision plat that eventually will get approved, there's a general notes section and they have different things. And what Richard's referencing is that it'll say no further development on tracks C, D, and E, or whatever it says, until such time that the water moratorium is lifted and there's available water. It'll be that specific. So whoever buys a property sees it in black and white. It'll be in the subdivision improvement agreement. So it'll be at least a couple of different places to protect the town, future buyers, and the developer. Thanks.
The belt, the belt and suspenders approach.
Richard, can I just interject one thing? Just so we keep the record straight. I think I think actually how we got to the twenty-two and a half was that we were grandfathered a plus three and not a plus one. So we had this moratorium.
Yeah.
And then we got a plus three. So we're, we're still talking about the same twenty-two and a half.
Right.
But we were not subject to the plus one because we came in on the first iteration of the moratorium, which was still plus three.
Right. Thank you for that, that clarification. All right. Is there any deadline or agreement that binds the town to ever provide water to these phases? No, the water moratorium is in effect until sufficient capacity is developed. You know, and there is, there is state law saying, you know, even, even with the recent trends in like laws that try to, try to force municipalities to build density and issue building permits and not have growth caps that specifically say if there is a utility restriction on utility capacity, including water, that you cannot be required to issue a building permit. So we feel, we feel good about, about that. Is it recommended by our town attorney to approve phases three, four, and five at this point with any conditions? Yes, we are recommending approval with the conditions that we have recommended, plus a couple that I added in the memo that we provided yesterday. You know, it's, it's important to keep in mind that this is still preliminary, preliminary plan and plat phase. And so there are still details being worked out, but it is the point at which, you know, planning commission and town council are looking to see if this development is functional, has all the parts necessary to move forward with, and in this case, with the caveat that water is a big question mark. The town is still working on its, its water plan. And so, but with that in mind, we feel that we have put enough safeguards in there for the town that it is, it is prudent to go ahead and recommend approval for, for the development at this stage. Seems like a blanket seat out approval. This, this is one that Jeff answered, and then I was about, should it be a condition of approval noted in the legal agreement that your future access permit would be required? Yes, we can put that into, as a condition of approval, and that can be put into the SIA as well. And then kind of big picture, can the town be liable? If anyway, if we approve phases three, four, and five, but then, you know, water's not available is the way I read that. You know, litigation's a risk with any land use decision. The mechanism for appealing a land use decision is called a Rule one oh six appeal that has to be filed within twenty-eight days. And then regardless of whether it's Rule, Rule one oh six or any other type of litigation, if it's relating to a land use decision, we have a code provision in the Mintern code that stays any processing of any permits for development that is subject of litigation. So we, we think that is a disincentive to sue. And then I know there's a lot of concern around, you know, that, that this, this feels similar to the building place situation where it was approved without sufficient SFEs. And it's, I think it's important to acknowledge that there were similar protections in that SIA and on that plat, and those were not challenged. It was a the, the developer there attempted to, to argue that there is a process in the old moratorium, the twenty nineteen moratorium, to allow for modification that was denied that no longer exists in today's moratorium. And so we feel that it is we are, we are in a good situation now to not be subject to that type of litigation. Without, without going too far into something that I, you know, wouldn't want to discuss more in, in public session. And then generally on water, I was looking back at the PUD narrative and Jeff and I had talked about this, you know, a couple of months ago at this point, that I think he was hoping to show how water efficient the development could be on pages twenty-six through thirty of the narrative with some helpful charts and this, you know, was intended to, to show that, you know, there, there is enough physical water to do this. Whether that is true or not, I, I believe our water engineers have disputed this, but in any case, I think it's beside the point that given the, given the status of the town's water court cases and the water plan, that is not going to happen. There's twenty-two point five SFEs that are going. That are going to be u- utilized pursuant to chapter thirteen, um, regarding utilities. Um, and how those SFEs are allocated to different types of residential units. Um, and so my recommendation regarding that is that those pages and those charts be, um, removed entirely. So that there's no confusion or discussion that, um, chapter thirteen is not going to apply to the project. So that's, that's kind of my response to Commissioner Boyd's questions. I have two additional recommended conditions of approval. One I just discussed, pages twenty-six through thirty of the PUD narrative are deleted in their entirety. And then revising plat note sixteen is the one, uh, Scott discussed earlier regarding the water moratorium. And the existing condition of approval, uh, that vested rights are explicitly subject to the availability of water pursuant to the water moratorium. And for the avoidance of doubt, the development is entitled to twenty-two point five SFEs pursuant to code chapter thirteen until such time the moratorium is lifted. So, um, happy to answer any questions.
So, so you have the two conditions, additional conditions? We have to put another condition on the inclusion of language in the SIA?
That existing condition of approval discuss, I believe it discusses, um. The SIA, I would need, let me. Yeah, it's condition, condition number one in my letter from November first.
Okay, but what page?
Two.
Two. No, 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 but the original conditions from the November eleventh meeting is what he's saying is that there were conditions in the eleventh meeting that had SIA. Otherwise, the two conditions that he's added. In this memo are going to be added to those additional conditions that were already, I'm just trying to make sure like when we.
Right.
Try page forty-two of the packet or thirty-three.
That, that, that condition does, that I included in the November first letter, does include reference to the plat note and the SIA. Um, being subject to water moratorium, um, and then I think I would just add to that condition. For the avoidance of doubt, um, the development is entitled to twenty-two point five SFEs.
Yeah, I still, I'm just trying to find where in our package.
Richard, I have one question while we're waiting.
Sure.
Why did you not delete pages thirty-one and thirty-two when they're part of that?
We, we could, we could be looking at different, I, I might have been looking at the.
It's track C, but it still has.
No, I, I'm saying, I th- I might have been looking at, um. I'm just realizing the document that I submitted that was revised and that moved some of the pages around. When I changed some of the.
I think that's correct, Richard.
Yeah, so I, I, I would go with whatever the is submit, you know, a- and it doesn't need to be twenty-six to thirty, it can be all. Discussion under the heading of chapter thirteen water variance.
It just, it's all encompassing, like of the, the whole discussion in there about water and. It, it's, we're striking it all.
Yep.
Which is basically from, from wherever it starts to the end of it.
Yeah, because it's like another chart and a half a page.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think I was working off of a revised document, uh, when I looked at those page numbers.
Should be twenty-six through thirty-two.
If what Richard's saying is that we won't make it specific to pages and instead we'll just remove the whole section.
Thank you.
And Amanda, the.
I think it's on page one oh five, like the conditions start like around one oh five in the packet, thank you. Um, so it'll be those two additions and then I, I'm still trying to figure out where the. Condition for the SIA, I think it's. Is it that one on page one oh five?
Yeah, number two, I believe.
Is the one that we're talking about?
And planning director to ensure that the PUD guide contains only matters relating to land use. And then that final sentence, many of these matters will also be reflected in the SIA.
Okay, and then also, condition number three, two, also has to relate to SIA. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
I have a question. First of all, thank you, Richard and Jeff for addressing, like, the questions that I had and answering them and. Also explaining them specifically, uh, your responses to the rest of fellow commissioners. And staff as well for taking the time, I appreciate it very much. So. I just want, I don't, I know, we're not at that point because I know we're. Public comment open and stuff like that, but when. When a condition, if there's. Uh, motion made, the old conditions. The prior, excuse me?
Should still all apply.
One through s- all of them.
Yes.
They apply plus these extra two and whatever. Okay.
Yeah, if you want some help with a motion, I would say it would be including all staff recommended conditions and those discussed. With the town attorney and the town engineer.
Including revised conditions, do we need to say including revised conditions underneath? Engineering and town attorney memos?
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, the, the, you know, the, the record. The record will reflect what, what that discussion was and can be carried into, um. You know, the recommendation to town council.
I, sorry, one more question, are those conditions added just to the preliminary development plan for the PUD? Or do they need to be added to the preliminary plat also?
How do, Madison, how do we have them structured right now? Are they just conditions of the, of the plan?
No, I actually went through your original letter and split out the plat specific ones to the plan specific ones. So I would think that, you know, the plat note, we should change note sixteen, that one will be associated with the plat.
Okay, then yes, it needs to be specific to, um, each approval.
And that, that is not specific to the PUD?
It's specific to the plat for the PUD.
The plat note, including, including the twenty-two point five SFEs on note sixteen. Is specific to the plat.
Number one is PUD, Michael, number two is plat. With the new conditions.
New conditions, number one is PUD, number two is plat.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
We have public comment open?
Yeah, um, any more questions for Jeff or Richard at this time?
Anybody? No.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and read this letter email that we received, uh, this is a letter from Bob Stepanoff. At nine sixty-two Main Street, we received this, um. Wednesday, November thirteenth. I guess that's why I didn't make it into the last packet.
Cause it came in during the hearing, which is why I wasn't seeing.
Yeah. Uh, it says, hello Madison, regarding this evening's planning commission meeting on Mintern Village PUD, we have a few concerns. The request for setback variance, as a homeowner at nine sixty-two Main Street and having recently completed a house renovation. We are adamantly opposed to granting a setback variance, we are, we were restricted significantly. In design and citing options due to our strict setbacks and utility easement. The owner de- developer of Mintern Village should be held to the same standard. We were held to stringent setbacks on the river and side and front setbacks. These developers should not get the variance for setbacks, even if it, if a butts open space similar to being restricted against the river. In addition to variances for setbacks are the significant concerns regarding traffic flow out of a single entrance to the entire development. With forty-two units with at least two bedrooms, it's potentially four cars per dwelling unit, which equates to one hundred and sixty-eight cars for the. For the residential units total, plus the cars for the two commercial spaces, which will have constant traffic to them. The placement of the proposed commercial slash fire station being on the opposite side of the development from the other commercial space. Both commercial spaces should be plant, placed on the south side of the PUD closer to existing light commercial in this area. Moving the proposed commercial slash fire department building to the south allows for a separate or second or third entrance. For the development, which provides a safer and more dedicated access for service. This PUD is proposing a single entrance to the entire development. That has significant impact to traffic flow, not only for Mintern residents, but for all those traveling from Leadville through Mintern. Has CDOT done a full traffic impact study for this PUD? At minimum, the development with this density of residential and added commercial space should be required to have two, if not three, points of egress for the development. Regards, Bob Stepanoff. I believe that's the only public comment we've received. Okay.
And there's nobody out there tonight.
If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. If not, we will close public comment. Your wife is online.
We will close public comment. The one thing I forgot to do, if it's okay with you guys, is Daryl, did you have anything left?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that. Is there anybody on commission who's had anything else? Yes, no? No, no? So with that, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Midtown, Midtown Village PUD. With the following staff recommended conditions that were listed one through seven. As well as. An additional condition that we're removing pages. Were re- ru- were removing pages twenty-six through whatever the complete water narrative. Out of, out of, out of there. And then I actually have a third condition. That. Whenever phases three, four, or five, regardless, uh, of the owners at that time. That they. Understand that there will be additional CDOT studies required and, and that they will comply.
May I have a second?
A second.
So we have a motion by Michael, we have a second by Eric, is there any further conversation?
Madam Chair, um, now might be a good time to just remind the commissioners that, um, there are some suggestion motions in the staff report. And I think it's really imperative that in your motions you, um, make a reference to. Uh, whether or not the application is meeting the findings or not meeting the findings. You don't have to list all of the findings for preliminary plan or preliminary plat or rezoning, uh, but I think that's important.
So I would like to revise Commissioner Boyd's motion and.
I'm not sure you need to revise this one, but, um, the next two motions, I think I'm just advising you to.
Just acknowledge that it generally conforms.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we're okay, we have motion by Michael, second by Eric, no further discussion. May I have a roll call, please, on the preliminary plan, preliminary plan sections?
Amanda, I.
Eric, I.
Lynn, I.
Michael, I.
Daryl?
Daryl, I.
Thank you. Next.
I make a motion to approve the preliminary pad plat. As it generally conforms to the requirements of the municipal, Minter Municipal, Municipal Code. As part of that recommendation, I recommend it, recommend it includes the conditions. As listed in the memo from November eleventh by staff. As well as the additional condition included in the memo. From Carp New Hamlin on December eleventh.
More specifically?
More specifically, the second condition related to the plat note sixteen.
May I have a second?
Daryl seconds it.
Motion by Amanda, second by Daryl, any further conversation?
I would, I, I would like to. Add, add the, just for clarity, the additional CDOT. Condition that it, that it, that it's known that three, four, and five will take an additional study. And whether they're developed individually or as a whole, the study's required. And whoever the applicant is at the time will comply.
So you want this note on the plat as well?
I don't know, does it need to be noted on all three or, or?
I don't believe so. Right, I think that that would, could be specific to the plan in the SIA.
Yeah.
So that doesn't need to be added on it?
Just on the plan.
Just on the first one.
Right.
Okay, yes, I, we have, I'm good.
I'm good, okay, with that, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Daryl. No further discussion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Amanda, I.
Eric, I.
Lynn, I.
Michael, I.
Daryl, I.
Daryl, I, okay, thank you. Next.
Can I ask one question? Procedure. Does the plat have to be opened to public comment?
It was opened to public comment at the last meeting. Public comment really needs to be closed for the plat, kind of after the fact.
Somebody on there who wants to speak to that, so with that, we will close public comment on the. Mintern Midtown plat, preliminary plat.
Same thing with the amendment.
Zone district.
Yes.
Shall I wait till we go to the?
Oh, I have a motion that passed, so we are at that point.
Okay.
Close public comment for zone district.
Close public comment for zone district.
I make a motion to approve zone district amendment as it generally, as it complies. With applicable standards and criteria in the Minter Municipal Code.
Motion by Amanda, may I have a second, please?
I second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Michael, is there any further conversation? Discussion, no? With that, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Amanda, I.
Eric, I.
Lynn, I.
Michael, I.
Daryl, I.
Thank you, Daryl.
Jeff, you better get to work.
Thank you all.
Will you take a rest, you big?
Yes.
Richard and Jeff Spinell, thank you.
Thanks, Joe, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is Matt here?
Yep. Hi, Matt.
Yeah. Good evening, Matt.
Thanks for being on standby tonight.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Is Mintern Forward Land Use Code update draft article eight subdivision application requirements and procedures. Stop?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, um, I'm not gonna talk too much, I think, uh, Matt has, as always, prepared a really good memo that he's prepared to walk us through. I guess the. The subject tonight is article eight, um, we're still working to finalize article five, just little tweaks and stuff. But you spent a lot of time on our five, we've had a joint work session, which I think went really well, thank you for, uh, attending that and, and taking the time. Now we're on to Article Eight. So a lot of the same, pretty similar format, dealing with subdivisions, which generally Planning Commission isn't going to spend a lot of time reviewing. But equally important for us is kind of bringing our code up to a different level as far as clarity, number one, so there's no conflicts and confusion in the subdivision code itself. But then building in some of that flexibility and administrative approval ability for some of the smaller plats that we deal with administratively now, but it's not as clear as it could be in our code that we process is and stuff like that. So I won't steal Matt's thunder. Once again, he's done the bulk of the work on this. We still have sections that we're working on building out for Article Eight. So I'll let him go through those, but.
Before we jump into Article Eight, quick question of post us leaving, you know, the council chambers. Was there any additional commentary on the body of work or any additional overall direction or anything?
Nope, I received nothing, no emails or any other communication from council members. Good, bad, or otherwise, I saw Gusty in the street today and he was very complimentary of the work session. Thought it went great and was. Yep. All right. Matt, you're up.
All right, thank you. So I, one thing that I actually forgot to put in my memo, which is a fairly significant change, not substantive, just more of a formatting change, is right now subdivisions are a separate chapter of the municipal code. And what we're, kind of the format that we're proposing for this new land use code is to have subdivisions all under. So we'll have subdivisions and land use applications under this new chapter, which may be called Land Use Code, Land Use and Development Code, kind of whatever title we end up coming up with. So it'll be a new Chapter Sixteen and Chapter Seventeen will go away. So subdivisions and land use applications, kind of everything related to land use activities in the town of Mintern will live under this new chapter. So just wanted to note that it's, again, it's not a substantive change. It's more of just a, kind of how the formatting change from what would exist today.
And those are generally referred to as unified development codes. So you, kind of the one-stop-shop notion. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, Matt.
Oh, no worries. So what I will do is go through section by section, kind of how it's outlined in the memo. And certainly feel free to interrupt, ask questions, provide comments, things like that as we go on. So section, the first section, sixteen, eight, ten, general provisions. The purpose language comes directly from the existing code. It needs some work, so what's in there isn't, isn't great. I mean, it's not terrible, but it needs some cleaning up. And one of the things that staff has noted in its review of that purpose language is it doesn't, doesn't clarify that subdivisions can be subdivisions of land or of buildings. So we need to make sure that that's pretty clear in the purpose statement. But that, again, what's, what's being presented to you this evening is still pretty rough. It's come from the existing code and could probably use some, it needs some cleaning up and some consolidation. Also, under the general provisions section, as part of the code update, what I've suggested and talked with Scott and Madison about is trying to pull together some subdivision standards. I mean, there's bits and pieces of standards in the code today, but kind of maybe creating a more robust section for subdivision standards. And subdivision standards might be things like lot, or blocks within a subdivision can only be so many feet wide by so many feet long. So you don't end up with lots or blocks that are half a mile long and a mile wide, things like that. Just kind of some general general standards to help guide the design of any new subdivisions in the town and ensure that they're, they're really kind of compliant or meeting or compatible with the character of Mintern. And, and so then this bullet point here in my memo just says that it probably need to add a provision under general provisions that just states something along the lines of all subdivisions need to comply with the applicable subdivision standards of the town. And that's, that's all I have under general provisions. It's, it's a fairly succinct section. And I will keep going unless anybody wants to interject and ask questions or provide comments. Yep. Sorry.
Go right ahead.
Okay. The next section, sixteen, eight, twenty, it's the same table, just different contents as, as a table that, that was provided for land use applications. So this table lists the different types of subdivision applications and provides an overview of the review process for each type of application. Exemption plat minor subdivisions and the sketch plan step for major subdivisions. We're still working on the review process for those application types. That's, that's why there, there's a placeholder for those. We will add those to that table when, when we get a draft of those, those review processes hammered out and then provide that to the Planning Commission for review. Next section is, again, similar to what we did in Article Five. We included a table that provides a summary of the public notice requirements that are required for each type of subdivision application. The requirements for duplex condominium or townhome subdivisions, exemption plats and minor subdivisions, those are still being worked on with staff. And again, those will be added to that table and shared with the Planning Commission once we have a draft of those available. I also want to note that public notice requirements in that table may be further modified based on input from the town attorney. And then there's a statutory requirement, it's called major activity notice, that requires notice to the Board of County Commissioners in the Colorado Geological Survey for subdivision over five acres. That's been included in, in the public notice requirements, but we need confirmation from the town attorney that that's applicable. I've, I've run into that notice requirement in other communities I've worked in and I've contacted the Colorado Geological Survey and they said, oh, no, you don't have to notify us about this. So I want to make sure it's actually something that's required. Next section, waiver from subdivision standards. So this is a new section that I've used in other places I've worked, specifically Garfield County, where it allows an applicant to request a waiver from subdivision standards. And again, subdivision standards are something that we'll be working on in the, in the near future. And there's, it outlines the criteria for a waiver request and the process for approving a waiver. And I think what's really key to this process is it says that if you're asking for a waiver, you have to demonstrate that what the alternative that you're proposing meets or exceeds the standards of the town. So this, this wouldn't say, you know, I want to, I want to waiver just because I don't want to comply with your standards. It would really be kind of an opportunity for an applicant to propose something that maybe the town hasn't thought of or for whatever reason isn't incorporated with the town subdivision standard. So it's intended to incorporate some flexibility into the town's requirements and also accommodates some creative thinking on the applicant's behalf. Next section is administrative replats. This is a type of subdivision that's included in the town's existing code. The applicability and purpose language in the existing code is a bit ambiguous as to what, what this process is to be used for. So what we've done is tried to clarify that, that this process is used for any substantive change to a previously approved final plat. Example we've included here is removal of a plat note or plat notes. Or it can be used to modify or eliminate lot lines. So in some communities, they have a specific process for modifying lot lines. Sometimes it's called a lot line adjustment. We thought kind of bundling that under the administrative replat made sense. And it, and there's some reference in the existing code to that being one of the, the purposes of the administrative replat process.
Hey, Matt, can I jump in real quick? This one's really important to us because we deal with it a lot. There are numerous parcels in this town where people own contiguous parcels, so they own two lots that are next to each other. They've owned them for twenty years, but they're still showing up as two separate lots. They want to build a new house. They want to, you know, expand an existing house or something like that, but they're bound by lot lines before we move forward with design review board applications or as part of that process. And I think you've seen this in some cases. People are said, we tell people, okay, you need to merge those two lots, right? Combine those two lots, so we're dealing with one lot. In the past, sometimes those have dealt with river lots where people have done quiet titles for property that they've acquired through quiet title, but it's never formally been merged with the original lot. So those are just two examples, but we deal with this a lot in a town like Mintern, any old town that has these quirky little lots. And so this one's pretty important to us. But in most cases, you're not going to see those.
But it does exist now, it's just the clarity of when it's applicable is what we're trying to.
Yeah, and from a process standpoint, what is the right? Is it an amended final plat? Is it a lot line adjustment? This way, it would be an administrative replat, so we know what bucket those types of situations fit into.
So as part of this, it says like, or can we ask questions? Like this is open dialogue, okay. So as part of this, it says like, anything with a public easement cannot be modified through an administrative plat. Wouldn't majority of our lots on the river have public easements? Like the water line goes through most of those?
The utility.
Utility, but isn't that a public easement, a utility easement? Or is that a different? Am I confusing them?
I can try. Sorry, go ahead. Oh, so what I was going to say, I, that's, that comes from the existing code, that language. My, this isn't going to be a direct answer to your question. My understanding is that, that provision is in there because if you own, they own two lots and they're separated by an alley, a town right of way, an alleyway or a street. What this is saying is you cannot vacate or modify that right of way through this administrative replat process. There is a vacation of public right of way or easement process, and we'll get to that in just a bit. But it's, I think that provision is trying to say that in that event, you couldn't, if you own the two lots on either side of an alley or a street, you wouldn't be able to get rid of that street right of way and combine your two lots through the administrative replat process.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So it doesn't apply to utility easements just public?
It's a great question. I mean, I think it depends on how we define public easements. And that's, that's a note that I think I had, and we'll get to that in a bit when we get talk about vacation of public right of way or easements. I think right now, utility easements may be included under the public easement definition, which probably is a bit problematic because, I mean, easements, utility easement should be able to be modified just through an agreement with the utility provider. Kind of whoever holds that easement, it shouldn't require some formal process with the town. Unless, Scott, you disagree with me there?
No, I agree. I think sometimes you can use an amended final plat or an administrative replat to, you know, if, if an easement's been abandoned or whatever, you can show that on a plat to say, here's what it used to look like, now the easement's gone. You can also do, do that through other means. You can just record something and, and show that that easement's been abandoned and no longer affects the property. There's different ways to go about that.
So I think that's a great catch and probably we need to take, at the staff level, take a closer look at that to make sure that language isn't creating problems. As far as other changes that have been made to the administrative replat section, the submitted requirements have been, been modified from what's in the code now. Trying to, trying, in an effort to ensure that kind of every, everything that needs to be provided for an administrative replat, that, that, that list of requirements or items is very clear in the code. Then the review criteria for administrative replat has been modified and expanded from what's in the code today. Again, trying to ensure that the review criteria really is appropriate for, for this type of application. And then this, this is a note that I have for pretty much every application type. We've added language to clarify kind of the step-by-step process for the administrative replat application. And again, you'll see this, this is how we did it in Article Five and this, we carried this forward into Article Eight, that there's hopefully a pretty clear step-by-step process that an applicant can look at and staff as well and say, okay, here's step one, step two, here's how I get from the start, start to finish.
And Matt, you had made a note in the draft for administrative replats under notice of administrative decision. That we still are working through that as far as public notice requirements and the sequencing of if there's an administrative approval of a replat. At what point do neighboring properties get notified and how, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next is correction plats. And right now, this, this type of application is actually kind of buried under the Chapter Sixteen zoning. It's, I provided kind of a, a list of what you have to go through to find this provision. And it's under miscellaneous provisions under zoning. So we've pulled that out of there and create, and created a standalone section for this type of, of subdivision. And it's really not a subdivision, it's a process that allows you to, an applicant to modify or address technical corrections to a plat, a final plat that's been approved. So if you had a misspelling or there's some formatting issue or there's an issue in the legal description, things like very technical matters that need to be modified because, I mean, a final plat is a legal document, so it's, it's pretty critical that there aren't serious technical issues with those.
And survey information, bearings, distances, calculations, things that got missed somehow by the surveyor and our town engineer and, yeah.
High water line.
No. Don't want to go there.
And so there's a key difference here between the administrative replat and correction plat. Correction plat is, it's specific to technical corrections, whereas the administrative replat is for substantive changes to an approved final plat. So their, their applicability is different. In terms of review criteria, the existing code doesn't have any review criteria for correction plat, so we've added review criteria so that there's some basis for making a decision on a correction plat. And then again, we've added a language to, to hopefully outline a pretty straightforward step-by-step process for the, that, the application review process. Next is duplex condominium or townhome subdivisions. So in the existing code, this type of subdivision is considered a type B minor subdivision. We thought that Uh, we thought that. It it would help make the code more user friendly by pulling this out and and creating a standalone section for this type of subdivision. It it also helps to uh by having a standalone section, uh, it makes it easier to kind of tailor submitted requirements. That are specific to this type of subdivision uh and also have review criteria that's that's very specific to this. Uh, this sort of application. So um. The submitted requirements are largely based off of what's in the code today. I I think there's there's still some further review uh at the town staff level to make sure that everything that's listed there makes sense. And then we've also uh again added a um the step by step process for. That type of subdivision. Um, and I will clarify, so this type of subdivision would only apply to an existing building. This would be if you wanted to. Do a duplex, um, you want you you built some townhomes and you want to subdivide those after they've been constructed, things like that. So. It's it's typically something that's handled administratively. Um, that's been my experience in other communities. It it's pretty. A pretty straightforward process. Um, and I believe I had a note in here. Um, and asked. I've run into this issue in other communities where where developer comes in and says, I I want to. I want to subdivide my uh my townhomes and all I have is my foundation board. So uh, which makes having an accurate survey a little tricky sometimes if you don't have anything framed. So I'd I asked. Um, whether or not we needed to maybe add a. Statement in here that says you you can't apply for that type of subdivision until at least you have your framing uh or the or the shared walls are framed. Something along those lines.
Yeah, I think that's probably pretty important.
All right. Next is exemption plat, and this is one of the the sections that. Uh, we're still working on. It's a it'll be a new. A relatively new type of of subdivision. There is a an exemption plat. Um, for I think it's Bolt Lake. That exists in the code today. Um, this would be. Uh, sort of a a probably a different process, different um application uh submitted requirements, things of that nature. Um, and the intent of this type of subdivision is to try and clean up. Properties that may have been subdivided illegally. Um, create. Property that that could otherwise be created via court action or judgment. And create property that is intended for use and preservation under cons under a conservation easement. I've also seen this type of process used. When a property is surveyed and the the legal description. Results in maybe some gaps between the the property that was surveyed and surrounding properties. It can be used to kind of cleaned up. Uh, issues it with legal descriptions and things like that.
And Matt, the the way that I've seen it used the most um in my time at Eagle County was. All the lots that have been created in this county that were split off by deed. Um, after the county had adopted subdivision regulations and whoever was. Selling off these parcels uh were doing it illegally. And in lots of instances, they didn't comply with the minimum lot size of the zone district. So they were, you know, preexisting nonconforming lots. And the exemption process, at least at Eagle County, was used uh not in every one of those situations. But lots of them just to basically legalize the lot so someone could actually build a house. So. And we, like you mentioned, we have a process that was created specifically for the Bolts Lake properties um as part of the settlement agreement, and that lives. I don't know if that's been codified yet, but we went through a process to adopt changes to chapter. Sixteen and chapter seventeen to create this new. Uh, exemption plat process that is specific to bolts. At the time that we were going through that, I was trying to lobby to create a process that could be, you know, transcend and be used the rest of the the town. But it became apparent that it really A was going to slow down the settlement or the post settlement process. And B really wasn't going to be a good fit because they needed something specific for the Bolts Lake properties in their timeline. So. We've got a pretty good start on draft um language for this. I'm doing some research, looking at other. Municipalities and how they deal with exemption plats and how their code reads. Uh, it it's pretty straightforward. So we'll bring that to you at a later date.
Um, and I will note there's an error. Uh, no, I'm sorry. I was reading my bullet point. Um, so the review process for an exemption plat will um likely include a review. By town staff and then a a decision by town council. Uh, so so it wouldn't go in front of the planning commission. It's it's really, uh, it's sort of, again, trying to address some technical issues. And and it's pretty standard for these types of plots to just go straight to council for a a decision. Next is minor subdivisions. Uh, and. Right now, under minor subdivisions, there's there's sort of three classifications. One is amended final plats. The second is type A minor subdivisions. And then the third is type B minor subdivisions. And so what we've done with the the initial draft of Article Eight. Amendments to an approved final plats and amended final plat. Those those will now be addressed either via the administrative replat process or the correction plat process. Again, it sort of depends on what. What the change entails, whether it's technical corrections or something more substantive. And then, right now, as I mentioned earlier, uh condo duplex townhome subdivisions are under type B, so we pulled that out. Um, what what we're still working in at the staff level is trying to figure out. Kind of the best way to address the these other types of minor subdivisions, which is. Um, a subdivision that creates not more than six lots, that's not within a a previously approved subdivision. Or and then under type B, there's there's subdivisions creating not more than six lots that are are within an existing subdivision. So. We're we're trying to figure out, you know, do these continue to stay as two separate categories? Do we just have one minor subdivision category? Uh, and it applies whether or not. There the property is in or not within a an existing subdivision. And so. And that that's why that section hasn't been included in the the draft Article Eight that you've been provided with. We're we're still working on kind of hammering out the details of that, and then we'll bring a. A draft of that to you look at at a later time.
And and Matt, one of the things that we've been, you know, trying to. Trying to figure out and make sense uh moving forward, you know, what? What's the definition of a minor subdivision? Why is a minor subdivision a minor? And why do minor subdivisions have a potentially different process? You know, they don't generally go to a town council for approval. There's not a huge amount of engineering work that needs to be provided to staff. Um, like you said, it's it's re-subdividing lots that have already been subdivided. In most instances, um. And in other codes, like in fair play, there's a line that's drawn, you know, minor subdivision is a minor subdivision if it creates. In fair play, fewer than four lots, and. If these the lots to be created don't require any additional um extensions of water and sewer, any other major infrastructure. Beyond the developer or whoever putting in curb and gutter and sidewalk, right? So they've already been contemplated, the engineering work that went into the original subdivision. To make sure that the water sewer utilities could be provided. That's all been done, and then therefore it fits into this minor category. So those are some of the things that we're working through just to make sure it makes sense for staff and the applicant and the town and. Think we're getting there.
Think so.
Yeah. So. At that point, I think that's where we're headed is to try to. Differentiate and and define very clearly what we mean by minor subdivision and maybe include statements like that that say, you know, it's minor if it doesn't include. A bunch of engineering work, basically.
It's pretty blocking white.
Yeah. Sorry, Matt.
Oh, no. Um, and and yeah, I I would just echo Scott, what Scott said, that these. Minor subdivisions are intended to be pretty simple types of subdivisions. I mean, they could even include a lot split, things like that where. Uh, again, there's existing infrastructure, there's existing utilities, there's no, you don't have to be build new roads, you don't have to extend water and sewer, things like that. That that typically that sort of stuff. Takes you up to a the major subdivision classification when you when you have a more complex. Uh, subdivision that you're proposing. Uh, sections, the the next sections deal with uh estate and ranch lot in the mountaintop area. Uh, and this this language comes verbatim from the existing code. The reason for that is this, my understanding is this language are these. Some language emerged from a. Settlement agreement, so we're we're pretty limited on what. What we can do with the existing language without agreement from um the the landowners.
I think the the mountaintop estates is actually, you know, it's already baked into our code as a P U D and and as part of the. Kind of special subdivision subdivision um from a previous agreement, but same idea as far as the. The more current or more recent settlement agreement, everything that's kind of specific to battle and bolts.
And I I did note in my memo that um. I've talked with Scott and Madison about, you know, may is there an opportunity where maybe we can. At least enhance the the. Maybe the formatting and and the flow of the language, not. Not really getting into the the. Substance of the language, just trying to make it. A a bit easier to follow and understand. Um, so. We're we're going to work with the town attorney on that and and um again, we we have to. Confer with the landowner to make sure. Um, they're they're on board with that. And so if if we do move forward with any changes to those sections, we'll bring those in front of the planning commission to take a look at. Next is vacation of public rights away or easements. The existing code. Does not have any. Review criteria or specific review criteria. I I think the existing code, if I'm recalling correctly, it just says the. Planning Commission and Town Council will consider the merits of of the the vacation. So. Um, we've we've added some some additional review criteria to hopefully. Uh, ensure that there's there's some pretty clear guidance on what needs to be considered in. In the vacation of a right of way or easement. And and what I mean by vacation. Is not going to Mexico. It's um. It's getting rid of a right of way or easement. And it's a it's a pretty big deal because the. The town is. Getting rid of public uh or or vacating or or more or less getting rid of public property uh in the case of a right of way. And typically that that property goes to the adjacent property owner. So it's it's a transfer of public property to to private property owners. And then we we've added language again to to kind of clarify how that that whole process works. Next, um. We we get into major subdivisions, and this is the last uh type of subdivision. That um the town has. And so that then there's a new section that was added. It's sort of a. Bit of an introduction to the whole major subdivision section. It talks about when major subdivision. The major subdivision process applies, and then also provides an overview of of the step by step process for major subdivisions. Um, I did add a note in the um the actual draft of Article Eight. That that noted the uh the. Applicability statement may need some work right now. The way it reads is um. And this was something that I don't think the existing code addresses the applicability of major subdivisions, but it just says. Anything that doesn't fall in under any of the other subdivision application types is a major subdivision, so that they need some some fine tuning. And then. The sketch plan is a would be a new. A new step in the major subdivision process. And the idea behind the sketch plan, it's very similar to the a concept plan for a P U D. It's an opportunity for an applicant to come in and say, here's. Here's my idea for my subdivision. Planning Commission, Council, Staff, do you guys have any feedback for me? So that. I I have a better sense of what I need to do before I spend a lot of time and. And money um on engineers and planners and attorneys. Pulling together preliminary plat application. And that the sketch plan would be an optional, as it's proposed now, it'd be an optional step, so it's. At the applicant's discretion if they want to do that. If they don't, they can jump right into the preliminary plat. Uh, but again, it's it's the the idea is to provide. Um, if somebody wants to do, again, gonna kind of get a test the waters, this is an opportunity for them to do so.
So the we don't, we don't have that section built out quite yet, but I think the intent would be. You know, pretty light uh application submitted requirements, just enough information that we understand the layout of the subdivision. General, you know, adherence to our or at least the. The. Notion that that can actually comply with our subdivision regulations um and zoning requirements for creating the right sized lots for. Um, creating streets that will meet our standards, whatever the standards are, um, but not not. Requiring someone to spend a ton of money. On all that stuff before they get going. That makes sense.
In the process for a sketch plan, again, would be very similar to concept, a concept plan for a beauty where. The applicant would come in front of the planning commission. You guys would. Give the applicant some feedback, but there would be no formal um formal motion. So you'd just say, you know, here's. Here's what I think of your subdivision. Good luck. Um, and and same with town council. They they could go in front of council, get feedback and then. Uh, that that would be the extent of it. There's no. No formal action to be taken by either the planning commission or council. Next is the preliminary plat, which is the first required step in the major subdivision process. This is where the majority of the heavy lifting for a major subdivision. Uh, takes place. This is where the uh engineering and. Uh, all all the details of the 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 proposed subdivision, major subdivision are hammered out. So we the submitted requirements that are listed in the draft of Article Eight, a lot of those um come directly from the existing code. Uh, those those are still uh under review by town staff and and may change based on input from staff. There are new review criteria that have been incorporated for the preliminary plat. Uh, the review criteria in the existing code didn't really seem sufficient. Uh, to ensure a proper and complete review of a preliminary plat. Uh, again, these criteria are still under review by staff and and may change based on input from them. And then we've we've. Clarified or tried to clarify that this have the step by step process for a preliminary plat application. And the last. Subdivision application is a uh final plat. And there's a a key change that we're proposing for final plats. And and that would change the existing process, which. Requires a review and recommendation by planning commission and then review and decision by town council. What we're proposing is a one step process where. A final plat would go straight to town council. The reason for that is a final plat is. Is really getting, uh, it's it's a technical step. It's kind of. Putting the finishing touches on a on a proposed subdivision. Um, I mean, it's more or less a, you submit a plat map and and staff looks at that to make sure it. It meets all legal requirements, and then that goes in front of council just for final blessing and signatures. Um, the submitted requirements for the final plat, those again, still need further review by staff. And and the town attorney and town engineer. Um, so those those may be tweaked, and and if we make any revisions, of course, we'll bring that in front of the planning commission. Uh, the review criteria have been modified um to hopefully. Improve their applicability to a final plat. And then the the step by step process for a final plat, that's um. That's been detailed. That is, that is all I have.
You go first. I don't have a question, but I have, well, I guess it's sort of on page.
Are we going through each section? Like he has a lot of questions in the comments. Are we supposed to, are we gonna be addressing all of those tonight?
I don't think so.
No.
We're gonna be going through this when he gets some of those things taken care of, so. I mean, if you have something seriously use, yes.
Okay, because a lot of the questions like ask for our opinion and direction on on items. So like, do we want to give those tonight?
I would think tonight because he'll be working on this, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna continue to work on this.
Okay.
If there's specific things that you want to weigh in on.
I'm no, I'm asking, like, that's what I'm asking, because there's there's commentary in actual body, so there's this, there's Matt's staff memo, and then there's commentary in the body like that's asking, feels like it's asking for directions, so I'm wondering if we are going to go through those in addition to his memo.
Yeah, I can, if you'd like, I can walk through. A a lot of my comments were intended to kind of highlight some of the changes that were made, but I, yeah, I do know that there are some questions in here, so I'm happy to uh quickly go through and see if the planning commission has any input. Um, and we can start on page five. One of the questions I had, and this might be more of a question, some of these, I I do apologize, some of these questions are are probably for staff. Uh, but the first question, under waiver of subdivision standard, it says that uh the waiver process would only apply to minor subdivision or the preliminary plat, that should say plat uh for a major subdivision. And I was curious if there's any thoughts on other other subdivisions that that the waiver from the subdivision standards might be necessary to incorporate or or allow for a waiver to be requested. The the second question I had on that same page, uh, there's a statement that says an applicant must submit a waiver request as part of their application. And if they don't submit the waiver as part of their application, it it won't be considered by the town, and and I was just wondering if that's overly restrictive.
Uh, I don't think it is.
I think it's very clear.
And there there might be another subdivision type where we want to allow for a waiver, but I'm you know, administrative replats, correction plats, exemption plats are pretty focused and pretty narrow or narrow in their focus uh in in our scope of review. I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense, but for minor subdivisions where you're creating lots and possibly presenting kind of development plans that go along with access drives or things like that. The size or shape of lots, um same thing for preliminary plans for a ma- major subdivision. Design type issues where a waiver request would make sense perhaps for certain things, that that makes sense to me.
Can we also add, this is one comment I had in this section, is could we also, if there is a waiver, uh treated exactly like the waivers in set Article five, so it would show up on planning's um
Staff report.
The staff report, and we could um potentially call up any of those waivers. I think that would be important to want to be consistent with Article five.
Yeah, I thank you for that. Um, so under D waiver procedure.
Yeah.
There is a process that it goes to planning commission and town council, but I agree with you, it should be consistent perhaps.
Yeah. Well, is, wait, I guess maybe I'm con- con- confused because some of the maybe it's just my confusion, I, this is my first time reading um this chapter, so if there, if it's a subdivision application that's does, because some don't go to planning commission at all, those could have a waiver. And what I'm saying is like, it's because we're not going to see everything, correct, underneath this new underneath this, we wouldn't see like
So, so maybe the
Minor subdivision, we're not gonna see, but if there's a waiver on that minor subdivision, like I would expect that it would be in the staff memo or staff report, and it could potentially be called up.
Right. And and Matt, maybe this is a good time to kind of make a distinction between waiver of submittal requirements, which we saw a lot of in Article five. And a waiver of review criteria, can you kind of explain the thinking behind this?
Yeah, so there there it there are two different waivers. So the the first waiver that Scott mentioned is a a waiver of submittal requirement, so that that would be, that's something that the planning director uh has discretion on, so if if somebody's doing a a condominium subdivision, the planner could say, you know, you don't need to submit a geotech report, that's maybe that's already been done, or it really doesn't apply here, things like that. So that is where there's criteria that the planner had, the planning director has to 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 make a finding for, to say, okay, I'm gonna allow you just based on the type of project you're doing, I don't think these the middle require, application submittal requirements are necessary. They make a finding, and then if a staff report is required, they have to note, I waive A, B, C, and D for these reasons, and put that in their staff report. This this, so waiver from subdivision standards would be a- and again, the the town's code right now doesn't have really a a robust section that for subdivision standards, so it's um it doesn't exist today, it's something that I think we want to work on, and those sorts of standards could be, if you're doing uh a subdivision, the the blocks in your subdivision can only be so many feet wide by so many feet long, streets have to be designed to be so many feet wide. Um, if you're gonna do cul-de-sacs, you know, maybe there some places say you can't do cul-de-sacs unless absolutely necessary, things like that, so there there's sort of these design standards for subdivisions. And what this waiver from subdivision standards would allow is an applicant to come in and say, you know, I I I this standard that you have doesn't really work for what I want to do. Here's um here's why that doesn't work, here's why I'm requesting a waiver, and here's here's the alternative that I'm proposing. And then it it, so that would be submitted as part of their application, and and I think a major subdivision is probably the best example, because that goes to planning commission and council. So as part of the application, the applicant would say, I'm requesting this waiver for these reasons, a- and in here, it says what you have to include in your request in in the criteria for waiver. And then as part of the review process, planning commission would see that in the application and say, okay, I see the applicants making, asking for a waiver from these different design standards for their subdivision. And then they make a recommendation to council to say, yep, we agree that, you know, this waiver makes sense, or no, we don't. And then ultimately, council would make the final decision. Um, and I do apologize, it references minor subdivision in here, that's that's an error. So this this needs to be cleaned up a bit, but that that's kind of the general gist of this is that there will be design standards for subdivision, and this is an opportunity for an applicant to to ask for a waiver from those, um, and the idea to incorporate some some flexibility in the code so that it's not here are the standards, and you you must in all situations comply with these.
I'm gonna, so like my question, I'm gonna use an example, because I I don't know how to else to phrase it, so we knew when we were going and looking at all of the zoning that there is the like enclave in South Mintering where has different setbacks, because when it was built, that subdivision was given allowed smaller setbacks. That would event like a minor subdivision, because I think there's only like six houses there. It's the wo- wood-framed houses. Would would something like that, so like you had a s- minor subdivision that was only six lots, they came in and said, hey, we want different setbacks. Would that type of waiver to those setbacks be allowed underneath this, or would that then be showed up in a staff report and we could call up? Or is because that because that's changing some of our code, like what that, and I'm just using that as, that's my, that's the one I always think about when I think about minor subdivisions, because I feel like that is a would be considered a minor subdivision, not a major. And it did change something that we now carry through to our zone zoning, and that we have to deal with consistently.
Okay, um, I don't think the intent is to allow a variance from zoning standards.
Okay.
It's more, it's more specific to standards that we haven't actually developed yet.
Okay.
For that would apply to subdivision design in the future, so
Okay.
Like Matt was talking about, the the width of roads. Typical codes usually have minimum standards for the design of a subdivision.
Okay.
And sometimes those show up in our engineering standards, sometimes we have, we have engineering standards. But they need work, right? So this is, I think, something that we want, we want to work on, but to your point, I don't think it's necessarily, we want to create lots that have different setbacks. Number one, it's not good practice to to plat sub setbacks on a subdivision plat, because then it's if you plat a s- a setback on a subdivision plat that could last for a hundred years.
Yeah.
The zoning and the setbacks are gonna change over time, but you've got this thing shown on a plat, and then someone comes in and says, well, right here on this plat, these are my setbacks, and we say, no, those are not your setbacks, because the zoning dictates.
Done, okay.
So that's something we're trying to get away from.
Okay.
That's been done in the past, and I'm trying to get away from that.
The plat becomes non-conforming.
Kinda.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
See what I meant? Um, yeah, okay. I think that was just my
Or has potential to.
Yeah.
And I don't want that potential to be allowed to be waived without like, do I mean like?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Feel like sometimes that has been taken advantage of in other scenarios in town.
It it's Scott's correct, th- so so dimension, typically, things like setbacks, minimum lot size, building height, those are are lumped under dimensional requirements or dimensional standards, and those those are zoning requirements, so those, you you couldn't request the waiver from anything like that, as that's not what this process is intended to allow waiver from. Uh, but for example, say you were doing a subdivision and you wanted to pave your streets with cobblestones or pavers, and the town's code said all roads must be paved with asphalt. This would allow an applicant to say, you know, I I'd like to do cobblestones or or pavers in my subdivision. I'm asking for a waiver from this requirement to do uh that the town says I have to do asphalt roads. Um, that that's kind of the idea behind this, it it allows, it it's supposed to allow for some creativity uh not to not to say, you know, I don't want to do this, this, and that, or or change my setbacks, things like that.
And what's really key here, and this is, you know, I I've been part of projects where these kind of waivers are requested. And the the onus is on the applicant to prove that the alternative is as good or better from a performance standpoint. If we're asking for asphalt, and it has to be so many inches thick, and it has to be compacted to whatever to withstand a fire truck weight. And someone proposes, like you said, Matt, uh cobblestones, they just provide information to the town engineer to say that their design solution, their materials are as good or better than our performance standard. Does that make sense? So we're not getting, we're not asking for a Cadillac and getting a Chevy, where it's the opposite.
Right.
Or that their design somehow results in a safer or more efficiently out of their subdivision or something to affect. Okay. Were there other? Uh, Matt, you were asking, I think, on page seven eighty-one of the packet, which is, I don't know what page of the uh right under administrative replat.
Yeah, so this comes from the existing code, um, and and I'm certainly happy to get input from the planning commission, thi- this might be something more for for Scott Addison for for us to discuss, but this comes from the existing code, it says the administrative replat process is not applicable if um you have to dedicate right of way, there are any public improvements, uh traffic study and our drainage study, or a subdivision improvement agreement is required. So it's it's sort of applicability language. And that's why I thought you're applicability, but it's it's just some parameters on on when an administrative replat can be used. I I don't know if that's necessary to carry forward or not, that was more or less my question.
No, it doesn't seem to hurt, and it just clarifies that it doesn't fit in this, if any of these things are being proposed, then it fits a different category, so.
Yeah, it says you can't do the administrative replat if you need any of those things, which I think is helpful to an applicant.
Right, and and I would say, I I don't know that these are the the specific list would apply to a minor subdivision, but this is kind of where we're going with the minor subdivision process to say if if your subdivision requires A, B, C, or D, e- e- the minor subdivision process can't apply.
Yeah, I think like our previous conversation said that minor subdivisions are supposed to be like, there's already infrastructure, there's already a lot of it's a pretty simple thing, and if if you need any of those things, then you definitely probably are not a minor subdivision.
Right.
But I still don't think it hurts to have it in there.
Number eight is a, or I'm sorry, on page eight, I had a question about uh some submittal requirements, I I think that's probably more of a staff question. It it says that I mean, utility, so it says the subject property or properties are served by or actually, I'm sorry, um, it's more than just that, there's a whole list of, uh, I think it's bullet point six through eight that comes directly from the existing code. I I I think I'm more or less taking input from staff as to, you know, whether or not those those requirements need to be carried forward. But if the planning commission has any any feedback, certainly happy to hear that.
Yeah, a lot of these, I think most of these comments in the margins are just notes of things that we're still working on or questions for staff.
I just wanted to make sure we addressed them.
Okay.
I have a question that may be going backwards, but what is traverse closure computations?
Ooh.
Jeff Spinel's off the call.
A plat line goes like this, and it's, oops, traversing around those points at which it changes direction have mathematical closures uh that really smart surveyors and engineers know how to mathematically make sure they close, so there's not an open line and an incomplete subdivision.
They really don't like it when they don't close.
Throws off all these kinds of red flags.
It throws up all kinds of problems.
Makes um Jeff Spinel's head
Yeah, blow up, yeah.
And how does he find these? Is it something that's on
He has, the surveyor has to provide.
Okay.
Yeah. And then he verifies it, double checks it, and if the math doesn't work, then he says, you're gonna talk to your surveyor. Or like, if you don't provide it, then he's gonna wanna see it.
Thank you.
I I have a question. The administrative replat. I wonder it sounds like, you know, we we have the administrative replat now, but it sounds like we're trying to make it a little clearer, you know, for duplex townhome condos that were previously in the minor type B, and you know, specifically with townhomes, condos, and I guess duplexes. One question I have is in the process, if a if an applicant comes through and and just decides that they want to to your point, you know, instead of making a duplex out of a foundation, and we say, well, you you, we need to have framed walls to do it, right? The question is, if it's an old property and they want to subdivide it into a duplex or make it a townhome, make it a condo, where is there a provision that would trigger?
where is there a provision that would trigger? If, if, if just the planning staff is administratively going to allow a replat, I wonder, is there some language in there that also talks about whether or not that building meets building code to, to do that? So, rather than just somebody go, there's a bedroom wall here that now I'm going to make a divider in and I'm going to s- make it this duplex and I'm going to make a door on this side of the house and and let people in. Does it, where does it, where do we make sure that it meets fire code, it meets building code, it has UL listed assemblies?
That's a really good point because we do deal with that.
Yeah.
The response that we give people is, well, your idea sounds good if you want to condominiumize this existing building, but you need to get with a building official and prove that
That it works.
One hour firewall assemblies or whatever else you need to be able to legally subdivide this and create condominium space, so I don't know that we've thought about that, Matt.
No, I, I think that's a great comment and, and I know some places now, some communities now, folks are trying to take old hotels and I know Minter doesn't have old hotels, but, you know, you take the, the Super Eight that's a hotel, that was designed as a hotel or motel, and you try and convert that into apartments or condos. And it becomes a huge mess, so I, no, I think that's a great point and we probably need to include in the condominium section some, some language that says it's part of the process or, or subsequent to the subdivision. You have to demonstrate that what you want to do complies with building code.
Yeah, there's a trigger there. There's a threshold that
Right.
They, it's, obviously it's on the applicant to prove. And it probably involves the fire department and the local building official.
So wouldn't that already be captured under the narrative A conforming, conformance with the zoning of the subject property, or would that, are you, oh, it would?
No, I mean zoning is zoning and, and building code is.
Building code, okay.
So you can, you can only condominiumize or do a duplex split based on a number of things, but one of them is building code and the physical separation between those units from a safety standpoint. Um, like duplex splits, a lot of times you'll see a duplex lot where the line goes right down the middle of the duplex and then splits off at weird angles. A lot of times that has to do with getting separation between a window opening in a duplex and the lot line because there's a building code requirement that you have to be three feet away from. So just weird stuff like that, and I, I really appreciate you bringing that up because we do deal with that, we're going to deal with it in the future, so.
Well, it's not as, it's not as cut and dry all the time as a vertical wall that goes from the foundation to the roof. A lot of times you've got one unit stacking over another unit and parts of units that, you know, one guy's down here and another apartment's up here. And you can divide it that way and sell it legally.
We did that on a duplex three years ago.
But it has to be.
Yeah.
It has, it has to meet the building code for it too.
Yeah, I get it.
Um, this, this is Darryl. Uh, in reference to that, would like the turntable, could that be an example where they could do a condominiumized, something like that?
I'm unsure. Uh, great question because I could see that, but it would have, what, I think what Jeff is saying is they would have to make sure that from a building code standpoint that could be subdivided or condominiumized and, and safely, and there's the right kind of construction between units, so a fire in one unit can't be translated, you can't make its way into another unit. I mean, that's an oversimplification.
Wrong side of the tracks is what we used to call it.
Yeah. That's, I don't know if that's necessarily the only purpose of, of having building codes considered in a condo, but that's certainly one of them, and the fire ratings between units.
Yeah, oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, do we want to keep going down the, the line here or?
I mean, I've looked at, I don't think there's any other clear questions from Matt that he needed are input on and on. So, no, that's just my take. It looks like everything else is from staff, but not.
I have two things, Matt, on page eight seventy-six and page eight hundred. In talking about public notices, you have one hundred feet. And since this is combining within chapter sixteen and at the combined meeting, we decided two hundred feet, should that not?
Yes, that needs to be changed, and that's, uh, thank you for bringing that up. I, I do want to note, I think most of you were at the joint work session, but the, the decision that was made collectively is that, um, notice to adjacent property owners will go, we had lowered that to a hundred feet. Now it'll be, it's going back up to two hundred feet. Um, it was two fifty originally, so we're, we're going with two hundred. That's the radius that you go out from your property and, and anybody that falls within that radius, those are the folks you have to send notice to.
Those were the two places I noticed it, but there might be more.
Uh, yeah, it, it's, it may be in places throughout here. I, I, we will need to go through both article five and article, um, this article to make sure it's um, consistent.
And the other thing that we talked about at that meeting and did not really resolve per se was when those notices go out, how far ahead do they go out? Because they go out through the postal system and sometimes if it's has to be ten days, it's not necessarily going to get there, or somebody who's out of town might not get it. So that's something that's still up for question.
So I think the existing code, and, and I think this was carried forward, I think right now the wa- it wa- the way it's stated is, um, ten, ten day, ten calendar days prior to the first public hearing for your application.
And Matt, I think, um, I think we need to check state statute. I've, I've been dealing with an attorney up in Fair Play who has advised me that she thinks it's fourteen days minimum or something like that.
Okay. And, and I think that applies to all notice. I mean, I think throughout the, the requirements, it says minimum of ten days before your par- first public hearings for notice in the newspaper, mail notice, and then putting a sign on your property.
Um, then I had two more. It says eight page eight thirty-seven. Your comment about the existing code requires a request for an extension to be submitted at least sixty days prior. This could be reduced to thirty. And also the comment about the timeframe may be a bit too long. The one above one or two years may be more appropriate, which I agree with that one. And I have no problem with the second one.
Do we want one or two years?
But do we want one or two years?
I would say two because, and this is just, I feel like one year goes by so fast if they're trying to get through all of their.
And with the time it takes to get things done nowadays, I was going to say two also, Jeff.
Oh, two's fine.
Thirty or sixty? Page eight thirty-seven, duration of, oh, what section?
I would say thirty days prior because again, I feel like extension, you kind of have something come up at the last minute. You should know within, you thir- apply thirty days, but sixty days may you may not have all of the need for an extension sixty days out. So I would say thirty.
Right, that was my thought was, um, I mean, every, everywhere else where we've allowed an extension of approval, we say that that request must be submitted to the town at least thirty days. This is the only place it says sixty and, and this was carried from the existing code. Um, that, that just gives an applicant a little bit more time to, to get the request in.
Yeah.
And, and so the, the previous comment about, um, one or two years, so this, just to clarify, this, this would be for, uh, how long a preliminary, the, the approval of a preliminary plat would be for, so if we reduce that from three years, which is what is from the existing code, that would mean that if you had an approval of a preliminary plat, it would expire after one or two years unless you submitted a final plat. And, and the idea is that it, it, it keeps an applicant's feet to the fire. It keeps things moving forward so they don't get a preliminary plat approval and just sit on it for years.
Well, and they can still ask for an extension, can they not?
Yes, they can, yep.
It also ensures that if it, you know, doesn't linger too long and our engineering standards change or plat standards change or something like that.
So in light of that, it makes more sense to have one year.
I agree with Amanda, one year's pretty tight.
Okay. I'm going to care that deeply, so.
Careful what you wish for.
And well, I'll tell you where it, where it, it probably doesn't necess- in a way, in a town that has a moratorium of water. And if something gets granted water and they sit on it and they don't do anything about it, they still have the option.
So is there general consensus that duration of preliminary plat approval should be two years?
Yes, yes.
And, and I guess to Jeff's point, we should anticipate some additional, maybe some robust conversation around that number, maybe not, I don't know.
I don't know, I mean, it's, it's just like to, to Scott's point, if, if somebody you know, puts together something that they want to replat it, whether it's vacating lines or creating new lines and then they just sit on it for two years, it doesn't do the town any good.
Well, this is only for a major subdivision preliminary plat, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So like, how long did your preliminary plat take to develop?
Well, it's not that long really, because the plat side of it is, is kind of the, the easy part. It's coming up with all of
The thought, the time.
Yeah.
So you're thinking more towards one year?
I was, just, but for different reasons.
Okay.
You know, for, you guys are talking about how fast a year goes and you might need more time to get your act together, but in a way I don't know, I just feel like for us, for this town, A, there's not that, not much land where this applies in the first place.
Yeah, true.
The, the other side of it is, it doesn't have to do us any good to have pieces of land sitting around for months, if, if it's a major subdivision.
Extension language in here does allow, uh, town council to authorize an extension of up to two years and there's no limit on the number of extensions. So, you know, the, again, to this point about water availability, if you had your subdivision or your preliminary plat approved and you could demonstrate, look, there's no water, I can't do my subdivision, you could continue to get uh, extensions of your preliminary plat approval.
The other instance is, you know, like in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when I was at Eagle County, I think I spent the next two or three years almost exclusively dealing with extensions because of all these projects that had been approved at preliminary level that had no
Money.
Well, no future, uh, no market, uh, no one was doing anything, so there are those instances where they're, and that's, and that's key for this extension and the fact that there's no limit on the number of extensions. A council could al- always say, you've had five extensions, it's time to pull the plug on this project, right?
Yeah.
And that also relies on staff and the town attorney to say, there's no reality to this thing actually moving forward. Or they haven't presented any credible evidence that it can move forward. But it also allows for those crazy situations like water or
Stock market crash.
Crash or whatever, so.
So are we speaking with one or two, or are we speaking with two or one?
Two.
Two.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
No more questions for me.
I don't see any more current questions from my either. The references to battle retained parcels were from the previous, right, not the current? So there's nothing there.
Where's that?
It was in two places. One was on eight twenty-six. And I'm not sure where the other one was. I didn't mark it down till I saw it the second time.
Yeah, that, that comes from the existing code. It says any final plat within the battle retained parcel must include the following statement and acknowledgement. And then there's a long paragraph, I think, that relates to availability of municipal water. Or, yeah. I, I don't, Scott, I don't know if that needs to stay in there or not, but I, I, it was included because it's in the existing code and it seemed important.
Eight twenty-eight C is one of them. But I did not mark down the other one because the first one was even smaller.
It's under both final plat and preliminary plat submitted requirements.
I got you, I see it. Um, let's just make sure we review that with Mike.
Other than that, I didn't have any. Eric, do you have anything?
I just had something on page seven eighty-eight. A good cause or a bad cause, but it kind of defines a good cause, showing a extension of approval. Which may include, it's not limited, simultories being located out of state or out of the country or significant changes to the final plat required. I just didn't know if we had a specific on a good cause or a bad cause.
Do we need a definition?
So, I, I just quickly, I didn't, I don't know if my comment, I, I had a comment, I'm not sure if it's in here or not, but no, in article five where we say, the applicant must show good cause, we didn't include any examples. So that was one question I had is, is do we do things differently in article eight or just say there's, there needs to be a showing of good cause? And, and then if we do have a definition, that probably would be best to live in the, the definition section.
And that is in your comment on page seven eighty-eight.
Okay.
Amanda, anything else?
No.
Jeff, anything else?
I want to see the definition of a bad cause.
Well, as always, well done. Thank you for paying attention to this and giving us some great feedback, so.
Matt, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Well done, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep at it.
I will do my best.
I'm sure we'll be talking to you very soon.
Feels like progress.
Managers report?
Boo.
Yeah, boo is right. But good for Michelle.
Yes. I'll say that when it's time for planning comments.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't.
I'll, I'll explain if you don't know.
I just have on the, um, report, what is the DeLorge, Dolores Bridge Trust Opportunity Investigation? What is the Dolores Brid- is that a bridge or?
It is a type of bridge, yes, or that, um, it's a style, to my understanding. It's a style of bridge that we would, might, uh, use to replace the old bridge.
It's cool.
It's cool.
That was my only question, Matt. Get more, Jeff.
Uh-huh.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Planning commission comments?
Well, I would just like to thank Michelle Matier for all her hard work that she's done and I wish her luck and you're right, in her new job. She's going to be missed. Sorely by myself and I'm sure most other people in town. So, boo. That she's leaving.
When is she leaving?
I heard that her last day, um, I believe she told me her last day was February fourth.
Sep- Sept- February.
And that she, her first day is March or April.
I haven't heard what her first day is, so I don't know.
Thought it was March, but I bet she had like thirty days between.
Right, to get settled and that.
Yeah.
All that good stuff.
Yeah. But I look forward to seeing her down there.
You go down there?
I could, I'm playing music down there sometimes.
I've only been there once.
It's bigger than Minter, it's gorgeous.
They have a staff of like, when she told us.
Yeah.
A hundred and, a hundred and fifteen.
Staff.
Staff.
Seriously?
They have their own police department, public works department.
Yeah, everything.
The rec center. The rec center, the hot springs, I think all of that falls under her.
Just a slightly larger tax base.
Okay.
She's going to do great. And I suggest staying in touch with her.
I wonder what its population is that if it has all that staff, wow.
I would guess it's probably like maybe two thousand, between two and three, three?
Well, that's a big staff for not much bigger of a population than us.
It's a, they have a huge ice climbing festival.
I've heard of that.
Like huge, but it's literally like I don't even know, like I've, once you get there, you feel like I'm near at the end of the I don't know if you can keep going.
There's not much room to grow.
No, there's not much room to grow. And it is gorgeous. We played weddings down there. There's a lot of, it's a wedding destination in the summer.
Nine hundred and twenty people?
Yes.
Nine twenty?
Nine hundred and twenty.
And they have a hundred and fifteen employees?
That's ten percent.
Roll down.
I know. That's a huge. Well, then they must pay higher taxes.
They're hiring Elon Musk, too. Pair, paired down.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
They must have a huge tourism industry and need to staff all that people.
Why don't they somehow between here and Telluride?
You have to get beyond the turn to Telluride.
Yes.
Well, I think that's how I was in Telluride and I think on the way back when we went through you very somehow that's how I remember.
Switzerland of Colorado.
It is. It kind of feels like it. Yeah, it's really cool.
Beautiful old architecture and.
I don't have anything. I just have a son sitting at home alone.
Sitting home alone at Christmas, no, right now, bring him up. Moving, never mind.
I could be knowing him.
Future meetings, December twenty-fifth is canceled.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
January eighth, anybody? Everybody here?
Uh, one, one thing that I have and I'll let you go. January twenty-ninth, we are going to put, save the date out for an open house to kick off a process that Michelle would like us to start. So we have a public process to ask people what they think are the highest and best or just whatever they want to see the Highlands parcel used for. This will be kind of the first first time we do this. There are other parcels that the town has retained through the settlement agreement with Bolts that we'll have to go through a similar process on. But the Highlands is kind of our first priority, primarily because it holds the most potential future value. And the town needs to figure out what to do with this parcel, whether it, whatever it, whatever the community thinks is best and whatever the the right opportunities are for the town in order to potentially use some kind of funding to do a water treatment plan.
There's, is there an option of getting money for open space?
What's that?
Is there an option of getting money for open space?
There could be, yeah. That's, so that's the reason why we need to do this in a very public manner. So we're going to have an open house on the twenty-ninth. I have no idea what that open house is going to look like, what kind of displays or boards or information we're going to have. We have pulled together quite a bit of information pretty quickly. And start getting the community educated. We're going to put some information on the website. Here's the kind of the background. Why are we talking about this? Because of, you know, what happened in the settlement, where the town owns this property. Come and tell us what you think is is best. I do anticipate hearing a lot of people saying it should be open space or it should be in recreation or whatever.
Only reason I said that is I don't know who was talking to me about open space, but they were talking about how the, is there open space county situation or something that they have quite a lot of money?
He has a lot of money in their open space fund. We've also, you know, the Forest Service, CPW, they have funding for things. So there might be a multi-agency partnership that gets involved in some fashion, but we need to ask the people what they think and make sure it's very transparent and.
And by now you're building your friends.
Do you know the day that it's budgeting?
It's a Wednesday. It's the fifth Wednesday of January, so that's why.
Okay.
So it's like a meeting night, but we don't actually have a meeting.
Have a meeting.
So I'll give you more details and we'll start developing what that work session or what that open house looks like. That's all I have. Happy holidays.
I make a motion to adjourn next meeting of December eleventh.
Second.
On paper?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your hard work.